Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting on 16th February 2016. There's no one here this evening for public forum. Going to the minutes, their motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 5 January 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, corrections? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Motion to accept the minutes of January 12, 2016.
Second.
So moved.
Any discussion, any comments?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to accept the minutes of January 15, 2016.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. And motion to accept the minutes of February 2, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just had to make sure I didn't have any notes on them. That's what we're whipping through here. Well, guys, can we go back?
Genevieve is not here tonight, but...
Let me have topic 1 and 2 before we get to that.
Oh, okay. Well...
Here. I'm all set.
Well, Mr. Keneke is not here tonight. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't believe he is, anyway. I didn't see him.
No, he said he would not be able to make it in the Board of Health.
We had a resignation, excuse me, completion of a term on the Recreation Committee, Mr. Jane Isles. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Scott McCoy to the Recreation Committee to the position vacated by Mr. Jane Isles?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Nope. Thank you for being part of it. Aye.
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 As I was saying, Mr. Genevieve is not here tonight, but...
Yeah, I was going to suggest, Mr. Chairman, that what we do is, is we take up, apparently we need to take up the snow and ice budget, is that correct?
Yes.
And then move the other three items to the next meeting. I do have some questions for him, and at least one of them reflects town input.
Okay, if you have any questions about the union agreement, you can discuss that.
I'm okay with that.
There are motions, this concerns snow and ice. You know, each year we budget a certain amount, and if the budget potentially can go in deficit, or if it is in deficit, the Board of Selectmen are authorized to authorize spending beyond that provided for in the annual budget. So pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 31D, Board of Selectmen authorize... Is there a motion to pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 31D, the Board of Selectmen authorize the Department of Public Works to deficit spend in excess of the approved fiscal year 2016 appropriation for the purposes of snow and ice removal?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And that's in the signature folder when you get translated on.
Couple other things we're going to talk to Mr. Genevieve about tonight. I was hoping we'd have back the union agreement from the union, so we could close on that. In our sessions, we've come to agreement on terms. It's just a matter of them having voted and presenting it back to us for our vote. Town administrator?
Okay. One thing I meant to, it's not here in my report, but I just wanted to share with the Board of Selectmen that I had a meeting with the principal at Smith Academy two weeks ago. Jane Betzel, COA Director, was present as well, and I had set this up. Students at Smith Academy are required, I think the juniors and seniors are required to perform a number of community services. And in the past, those students used to participate in the Brown Bag Program that the Council on Aging has.
Excuse me.
And members of the chorus used to perform at events, COA events. So we revisited that with Superintendent and, I'm sorry, the school principal, high school principal, Andrew. And the very next day, he was here with some students for the Brown Bag Program. So anyway, I just wanted to...
Oh, it was very nice.
...let you know that we're re-engaging the students from Smith Academy with events with the COA. I think that'll work out positive. First item, budget schedule. The Selectmen and Finance Committee are posted for February 25. And in anticipation of that meeting, I will be meeting with the Treasurer and Accountant to review receipts and look at, you know, loans and the town's debt. So we'll have additional information, and I've started updating that spreadsheet, the budget spreadsheet. I'm working on that.
So we, excuse me, we will have a summary of all the financial scenarios?
Yes, that is my goal, to have that.
Excellent.
So that's what I'm working, actually, I have a meeting later this week with the Treasurer and the Town Accountant. I also gave you a copy of the Capital Planning Committee's recommendation. I wasn't sure if you had already received that in a previous packet, but I wanted to make sure you had that, because that will be something for review at the February 25 meeting.
And at this, I'm sorry, Jeff.
What time are we meeting on the 25th?
6:30.
Would it be convenient for you two to meet just ahead of that meeting? Maybe 5:45 or so?
Just name the time, as far as I'm concerned, Brian. I would defer to Brian, because he's got the work scheduled.
Finance will be here at 6:30, but what I'd like to do is, there's a whole variety of, some garden variety, some significant of issues with respect to the budget, and at least to have us get a chance to get...
Sure.
Have our discussion about what we think.
Yep.
I know the Finance Committee is doing the same thing on their part, to go through these same issues and getting a view as to what they're thinking about, and so we're all prepared at the same, for the same session at 6:30. There's things like the, I was going to say, cost of living that we're going to use. What minimum wage are we going to use, and how are we going to apply that? Because different folks have come in, there is a minimum wage, it's, what, $7.25, but others have used various other figures as so-called state minimum wage. What's our strategy with respect to the Department of Revenue? There was one suggestion by a member of the Finance Committee, and this has to do with any fencing of any of our free cash, using our legislatures, legislator, but, I mean, there's some issues with respect to doing that long-term for our relationship with DOR. There's a whole, whole series of these things. What are we going to do about the raises? What's our position on somebody's budget requests, some significant increases, increased hours, increased wages, new personnel staff? Just like to have our ducks in order as to how we, what our...
I don't have a problem with that, but I'm questioning the timing. I'm thinking that based on what we're going to...
A bit earlier?
I think we may need more time than that, but I don't know, that doesn't work out...
Based on the number of items for the...
I don't think it's going to happen in 45 minutes, but that's just me speculating. So you want to give it a shot, and we'll have to...
Make it 5:30?
5:30, all right.
5:30 is fine, 5:30 is fine for me. My concern was Brian.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I should be able to sneak out, though. So 5:30 on the 25th.
And we'll get out a, kind of a little topic summary.
Okay.
Well, and if time allows, you know, later that evening, once we're finished with the Finance Committee, if you need a little more time.
Well, I think most of these things we're going to resolve, or really move toward closure on, with the Finance Committee next week. The only activity we haven't heard from personally was the assessors, but they're level-funded, so understand. So we've, I think we've heard, all we're going to hear from various claimants, so... The piece of information we need to frame this is what you're all going to be bringing to the table.
That's correct.
That should be the...
The Treasurer will be meeting with us on the 25th.
What free cash will be, or what it looks like it's going to be, what the loans are that are out there in terms of our debt. That'll help frame that discussion.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
But at least we can have some, talk about some of these things and get our position established. Okay.
And that was, actually, that was going to be my question. So we've received everybody's request for 2017?
We have, with the exception of the assessors. They are meeting this evening, and I had asked for a copy of last year's, or this year's budget, but I haven't received it yet.
Okay.
Just, but it would be the same numbers that were approved anyway at town meeting, so that's what I would use to plug into that spreadsheet at this point.
Last year's numbers.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item is the Accountant's contract is up for negotiation, so we'll need to schedule a negotiation session.
Well, let's... His contract, I think, is up, what, the 27th of April?
Yes.
So, he was initially hired, he's on a one-year, this will be his first year coming up in April, so he's requested a raise, so we need to deal with, do we renew the contract? For what term, length, at what salary, those kind of issues, and so...
Again, the parameters of his request you will make available to, prior to that meeting.
Well, he requested that in his budget submission, the...
The amount?
The amount. So he reflected that on his budget.
That is correct, in his budget submission, he did...
So it's just a matter of us deciding what we want to do, and...
Well, it's not just a dollar thing, it's the rationale behind.
Oh, yes, exactly.
And that's what I expect to be part of, that work that we receive. You know, what is his rationale? Not that I have a problem with it, I just think it's appropriate as the giver of the raise, or approver of the raise, that we have access to that information.
Well, with your permission, in anticipation of that meeting, that discussion with him, what I'd like to do is just, you know, reach out to him and ask him if there is anything that he would like to put forward, and then I will pass that on to the Board members, and you'll have that prior to sitting down with him.
Fine with that.
Seems fair.
Okay, so do we want to schedule this now, or do you want to wait?
Can we wait until the conclusion of this meeting?
Okay.
We can do that, yeah, so tying up this meeting. Just touching base with, you know, the issues that have, the ongoing issues in the accounting office. I am requesting a weekly status update from the Accountant. He'll provide that for me on Fridays at the end of the week.
That's, okay, that's fine, and that's, but it gets back to our session for the budget. We need to see the way ahead here. We need to see what the plan and schedule is for the postings for 2016. We need to see what the plan and the milestones are for addressing the various issues raised by, in the last audit. I mean, there's a, and then all the things he found when he first got there, which really are part of the audit, but reconciliations not being done on a regular, all those kinds, how they're going to be addressed, so we don't end up in the next year...
Well, I'd just like to add, I still have some items to contribute to here, if I can. I'm having weekly meetings with the Treasurer and the Town Accountant. We met last week. I'm putting together a spreadsheet outlining those goals, deadlines, for when free cash Schedule A will be done. We are meeting again this week, Thursday. We will review, I will review that schedule with them. I've made arrangements for support to assist him with accounts payable through the Administrative Staff Office, and if it's necessary, and I would certainly have discussions with the Board of Selectmen to look at any other resources for support for that office, I will let you know. But that is an option.
Well, that's the other piece for our budget discussions going into '17 here.
For funding.
We've taken care of, apparently, something for right now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but when we go into '17, have we got it nailed down in the budget as to what is exactly we need to close on this whole accounting issue?
And that is information that I'm waiting to hear back from him. I had a discussion with him last week, and I've asked him to provide me, for him to give it, you know, serious thought as to what he's going to need, if anything, for the next fiscal year.
We'd just like, it'd be very helpful for the Board just to see kind of the overall plan here to address these various issues, and what it would take for the resources, in terms of resources, to take care of those.
Sure.
I think that begs the question, though, and that is, and I alluded to that before, is what happened prior to his starting that threw the situation into a mess?
Monthly operations not...
Excuse me, I'm not done yet, Jeff.
Go ahead.
14 and 15 were not completed.
Correct.
And his expectation was that he would start as of that, his point at hire, of hiring. And two years were done. That's what we don't want happening again, of which he was not the source of the problem.
No one's saying that.
That's fine, as long as it's out on the table, it's clear.
But what we're saying is, the problems he encountered were monthly operations not being booked timely, reconciliations not being done, monthly receipts not being booked to the general ledger, transition, a whole bunch of, there's a variety of things that we just don't want to see repeated again.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I might add as well, I absolutely concur on that. That's lousy accounting.
Or, or what is it, I don't know?
I don't know.
But...
He shouldn't have been left with that mess.
Well, he was.
Well, there's much to be worked on, and that's the whole purpose for, you know, Derek and I meeting every week, and on Fridays, he provides me with a status update. He is currently working on fiscal year 16, posting the receipts. So that is getting done, and that will take a little bit of time, but he understands the importance of that, because we are, you know, planning a budget for the next fiscal year, as well as warrant articles and warrants.
It's just time to close on what resources are required, so...
Yeah, and I, excuse me, to Jeff and Pat's point, I think it's, and we're on the right path, it's just making sure we have a way forward. That's, we can't go back, but we've, we don't want to revisit what we've been through again.
You can't do that.
That's good, thank you.
You're welcome. The next item is the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Emergency Management Planning Committee has been working on. Any edits or changes?
Yes.
If I can, you can send those to me, email them to me, and I will forward them on to the Emergency Management, well, the Director, Emergency Manager, Director slipped on ICE.
No one can read my writing.
She's out for a little while, but I will get them to the Fire Chief. Once PVPC has reviewed those comments, suggestions, they will be forwarding the plan onto the state.
There's a whole bunch of them from just, just spell check kind of things to, you know, we're a town, not a city, Brad Street is not the street, it's not Brad Street, it's Brad Street after Governor Brad Street, it's Depot Road is the name of the road, I mean, it's a whole...
I thought we went through that.
Doesn't even mention the dam on Mill River, it mentions two other dams. I've never even heard of the Ryan Dam. Anyone heard of the Ryan Dam?
Nope. I can double take when I saw that, too.
I mean, do we, I realize they cut and paste from other communities, and I'm wondering some of these places whether they, I understand that's how they got cities, not towns, but there's a couple places in Whately they cited for dams, but I'm not sure what... Elm Street Meadows and Hatfield Village are apartments.
Can you forward those comments to me?
I don't know that folks living there would call them apartments. What else?
If you forward those comments to me, and I will...
Then I had some issues about, well, some of these actions, again, so that you're, you don't have a timeline or timeframe for an action as "hope to."
Right, that's, those comments have been submitted to the Committee.
You know, there's several of those "hope to" do something. Well, you don't hope to. When can you do it? And then they're talking about reviewing the actions annually, they ought to be reviewed quarterly, otherwise it'll just become shelfware and...
I recognize some of the items that you've mentioned, and those have been forwarded to the Committee.
And I think the Chief mentioned they weren't going to, they would be more often than yearly. I think Stephen said that, actually, when he was here.
Our bond rating is not A+, it's AA. I mean, it's a whole bunch of, whole bunch of things that, I wonder who read it.
That was just provided at the last meeting.
Okay, well, it needs, just needs some cleanup.
It does. And as I said, some of those that you did reference, they are aware of those.
Right.
Okay. Housing study, I'm just waiting for a reply from the Planning Board Chair as to when the Planning Board may be available to meet with us. I've given them some meeting dates, just as soon as...
Did you all look at the plan? Did you all have it?
Oh, the original plan we got?
Yeah. Can we spend a minute on it, or are we trying to race through and do something else? What?
The housing plan?
Yeah.
I didn't provide a copy with you.
Oh, I didn't bring it with me.
Well, I think I can do this, it really looks like there's only a couple of actions in this whole thing. You know, remember, they provided that summary page of actions that had been agreed to by the Committee. One, if you establish the housing committee, then there's a whole list of things below that. 2, 3, 4, 5, 16, 18, 34, 36, 37, 40, and 43. All could be things as part of their charter, things that they would do, so on us to come up with a charter, but those would be some of the deliverables for that thing. And then, my own sense is, and I don't know how you all feel about it, I think we ought to lean on the private sector as opposed to creating a body that buys and operates housing. You know, work with, as one of the options they had listed, housing, a friendly 40B developer, or another one of these partnerships with a nonprofit developer of affordable houses. You know, those kind of actions seem to have a lot of merit, and that's where it ought to be. And then there's some other things here that are clearly in the purview of the Planning Board, accessory apartment bylaw, zoning standards that encourage concrete housing for seniors and people with disabilities. There's two or three others, they're all pretty generic. So I think we can, we could take their list of proposed things and package them, but the one I, one I didn't really think would be appropriate was establishing some housing authority to develop, acquire, and operate residential units. I mean, that's a...
You mean another group other than the current housing authority?
That's one of the, that's one of the options here. Anyway, if we depended on the private sector, I think things would happen a lot quicker and more efficiently.
I think what we need to do, though, Jeff, is to wait till Brian and I have a copy of that, and then we can discuss, and I'd like to go from yours as to the information you've made available, and, you know, and chuck it my lean at some point.
I thought you all had this a long time ago.
No.
Well, they, everybody did receive copies at a previous meeting.
Right, but not specific for tonight.
When the Advisory Committee presented their report.
Right, yeah.
But I was just, just an update as to, you know, we do need to meet with the Planning Board.
Well, then the other, the other thing, in addition to deciding on the actions and how we frame it up, is to decide the timing. And if you have to, you only get this five-year window.
Once you start.
Once it's been approved by DCHD, that means you're on a clock for eight units every year to show minimum progress, and you really need to be loaded and ready to go when you go forward to seek approval. And we have, we've laid no groundwork.
Right, and I think at the meeting with the Planning Board, we might be able to get some, because I agree that it should be a private developer, not the town trying to take on this responsibility of 100 units.
Yeah, 123.
Right.
Minimum.
But I, excuse me, I mean, it might take more than one meeting with the Planning Board, you know, something to kind of, you know, kick it off, and then to Jeff's point, make sure before that clock starts ticking that we're all on board with the way forward.
And the sooner the better, because some of these things may require the Planning Board to take certain actions for town meeting, bylaw changes or new bylaws.
That would, yeah, require a vote.
We could get those in place.
Right.
That's true. Now, it isn't necessary for the Housing Advisory Committee to meet again with the, unless you would like them to, I don't know.
I don't think we, if they choose, I mean, Paul Labby was on the Housing Advisory Committee, and he's on the Planning Board.
Right, right. That's right, so if we need clarification about anything, he would be able to...
Yeah, I think they're certainly welcome, but I don't know that they, I mean, they put in a lot of work and effort into that report.
Yeah, it's over to us to go run with the ball now.
Okay.
We can keep them posted, though.
But again, given town meeting, and if they have to have a hearing or something, a public hearing about a bylaw, or, it takes them time to go through their processes.
Yep.
That's true, so if there's anything for this year's annual town meeting, it's important that do that soon.
Probably pushing the envelope now.
Maybe we can meet with them, maybe they'll be available in March sometime.
Well, I'll reach out to Bob Bartlett, he is the chairman, I believe he's returning from Florida in April, so the Planning Board, if they're going to, they would need to meet sooner, and if, I don't know how he feels about not being at that meeting.
Okay.
So, but I will keep you up to date on that.
Well, a lot of folks put a lot of work into it, and we should just carry on. Same thing with the hazard plan, we just need to pick up and run with it.
Annual town meeting articles, I am working on drafting the warrant, and actually, I think what I may do is, when we meet on February 25, but there still may be other articles coming forward, but I can certainly have a first cut.
Has there been a general call out for articles?
Oh, there was, yeah, absolutely, and I've received articles from the town clerk. Let's see, expecting community preservation's articles soon. They are meeting later this month, and we also have an article on the warrant for the Smith Academy Park, and the open space is planning on applying for a grant, and we will need an article to accept that grant or that award, so we need to, they don't award it until later in the spring, so we need to have it, an article on the warrant prior to that.
And then if we have a pilot completed, we'll have that on the warrant?
Right, the agreement for that.
And if Mr. Smith, Larry Smith, from PVPC has completed his work on expedited permitting, that'd be another one to go back on?
Well, in order to, and I'm prepared to put that article back on there, but according to Mr. Smith at PVPC, we need to, the very first step we need to do is identify the area.
Okay.
Before you even have an article to accept...
Well, we know what the article says, because we've done it once before, but...
Right, we have that. We just need to identify the area, and of course, RA is going to...
Well, I reached out to one individual today to see if, put his property on, at least get us in the door. We'll see.
That's positive, okay. Speaking of the annual town meeting warrant, I provided you with a copy of an email from the town clerk, and just a few pages from another town, another community, their warrant, and the town clerk, our town clerk was suggesting that maybe we use that format. Use that format. Jeff, I think you have that right there in front of...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Flags.
Okay.
And since it is a selectman's warrant, I just wanted to share that with you, that she was recommending that we maybe change how we present the articles. You see, it lists human resource articles, general government articles. If there's bylaw changes, zoning or town bylaw changes, that would be a separate heading. This other community, under the article, provides additional information about the article that could make for a very lengthy warrant. But at the same time, I think it's helpful to the voters.
There's certain rules on how you write that article information.
The additional information?
The article information. I think if you... Oh, you have to talk to council. That can't be a bag of worms, but...
No, well, the only thing I was gonna say is I do like the way it's broken out for the people that can't see it. It just sort of categorizes things. But sometimes, you know, we have two or three sometimes that might be all interrelated that could theoretically fall under different categories. So, you know what I mean? Because if this one passes, then we take up another one. Or, you know, I don't know if that comes into play to Jeff's point about a certain process that we use. But, you know, I think anything we can provide the people, the most background information, which we could do regardless of how we set up the article, is the important thing.
There's just...
Just something to think about.
Yes, something. I was just gonna say, food for thought, and we can have discussions at a later time.
Deeper dive.
I just thought I would share that with you.
Well, one thing. Ask council about guidance on article information.
Okay.
There's some out there, and I kind of lost the bubble on it. Came up with Bill O'Neill some years ago. And it's not as though you can sit down with a pen or Brian can sit down and write it up. Not quite so simple.
Back, give you the other one back, so I'll take this one. Thank you, Marlene.
You're welcome. Next item, annual town report. Due date for reports from the departments is March 1st. So I will draft something for the selectmen, present that to you for review. Or if you have any, please, any information you'd like to see, put into the report.
Good, good. That's a great idea.
What's that?
Go for it.
I had it on my pile of stuff.
Your report?
That does very help just to craft... Just to get an outline out. We'll all play with it afterward.
Yeah, tweak it. Status updates, the expedited permitting process. So again, I'd really like to get... I need to spend more time involved in that, but I really would like to get the article on the town meeting warrant for that. So I'm hoping maybe, yes, if RA or, you know, we can come up with an area property in town to identify as part of this process, do that.
Well, folks need to know about... We haven't got any publicity out, but they need to know this is an opportunity, if they choose to use it.
Right. And we also need to...
It has to be residential, commercial, industrial, whatever. Has to be a minimum of 50,000 square foot facility. You can't include other buildings that are already there in that count.
Yeah, there's some guidelines.
And there's some general guidelines about it. And it...
I should have included those in your package, because I have those.
Publicity from the state. They'll advertise that you have expedited permitting process in this community. And here's some areas where owners have been... Who have committed, they're willing to participate.
Right. Pretty much what is complete is the plan itself and the contribution from all the departments. It's just some last-minute things that need to be updated, but that's pretty well set.
Super.
FRTA, Franklin Regional Transit Authority. We did, I think I spoke briefly, maybe to Jeff. We identified a parcel, and I sent a letter to the owner. I have not received a response from that owner. So I will reach out to them. But I was also told that they spend winters in Florida. But I would think their mail would be forwarded to them, or somebody would be picking it up.
A parcel...
On Route 5 and 10. To be a stop, location stop. Yeah, across the street. It's across the street from FedEx. So I'm anxious to get back to Franklin Regional Transit Authority about this. I'd just like to have a conversation with the owner and to see if they're comfortable with it. The payment in lieu of taxes. As you know, we met with Chris Clark from Nexamp two weeks ago. I am drafting, started working on that today, an agreement. And I will have that... I should have that pretty well set by the end of the week. And the Selectmen and Finance Committee assessors can take a look at that. I asked Mr. Clark to just identify the parcel. I don't have that information, so he needs to provide that. I looked at the map. It's not... Does not appear on the map. So I looked at the property records in the assessor's office. I have an idea, but I need him to tell me what parcel it is.
Which, okay, this is the Nexamp?
This is Nexamp. This is for the property on North Hatfield Road, not Plain Road.
Plain... Planning Board should have the whole package there for you, because they've been through the Planning Board.
Oh, yes, they would. Their minutes would reflect that, wouldn't it?
It's all in there.
That's correct.
I don't have...
That's true.
I have a copy somewhere. I read it.
Well, I have the minutes of the Planning Board from their description.
Wilma should have a package for you.
Right. Well, she gave me information from Planning Board's meeting with Sun East.
But she'll have the Nexamp package with all their...
Nexamp, yes.
Where they are, which parcels are encompassed.
That's right, they will. So I'll do that. That's a good point. And the next item, the Community Compact. In January 2015, the governor signed an executive order.
Well, can I back up one here? Some point soon here, we need to close on whether we're going to pursue net metering or not. And then the aggregation...
With Sun East.
With, yes, Sun East is proposing net metering. And then the Colonial Power Group was in here offering to step into what HCOG was earlier trying to do, is serve as an aggregator for our load.
That would be for the entire community.
So we need to close on...
Do need to, yes.
Right, that was for the residents.
Right, including the residents, yeah. The entire community.
That's the one where everybody, if we decide to go that route, everyone's in, unless they opt out, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
And we've already been through town meeting with the necessary article that covers that down. Did that, what, a year or two ago, years ago? When I was on the HCOG, we did it.
That article would cover our relationship with Colonial Power and Sun East.
Why don't you pull it out?
I believe it... It's a general article.
It was on aggregation.
Right. I did look at that. It wasn't specific to any company.
With respect to these solar issues, we also owe a response to the gentleman from Hadley, who has come in with a proposal.
Actually, that's net metering as well.
Another net metering. So we've got a lot on the plate here with pilots, net metering, aggregation. It's all kind of swirling here. We just need to lay out a way ahead on each one of them. Okay.
This Community Compact is a program I provided you with questions. And I don't think I also have these for... This for you. This is the... I provided you with common questions about the Community Compact. This is the Commonwealth's commitment, one for each of you.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
Anyway, it allows the town to qualify for grants. So if you are not a Community Compact, we're not eligible for these grant opportunities that come up. There was one just recently announced. It's an IT technology grant, and I would have been interested in applying for it. I was also reviewing Mass Works criteria for infrastructure, waters who are infrastructure projects. And actually, that's one of the items that they look for. So I wasn't sure if Paul ever brought this to the board's attention. It was in January of last year that this order was signed by the governor, and the governor's office went out and visited with regions.
You're absolutely right. We ought to take a look at it. It's an ongoing thing. There's no established cutoff date. It's a rolling application process. Of course, I think they only have, what, $3 million to dish out? So earlier you get it in, the...
But we want some of that.
Better chance.
So I'd like to submit the application. And I applied to DOR for a pass code. I can only submit the application once. So once I log in...
You can submit up to three.
Right.
You can submit up to three applications. So we ought to have a discussion with Phil, because there's one on the water infrastructure, which also covers, incidentally, wastewater. And I was just thinking, given that big, thick DEP report of all these things we've got to do, and given our short and on the capital plan, we had addressed that with doing those studies with free cash, that, you know, maybe we also drop in a proposal here using the DEP report kind of as our stick, that our wedge in terms of need.
Well, in addition to the background that I provide you with, I also listed out the best practices. And we don't have to do this this evening, but I was hoping to, you know, if you could review it and then have some discussion about those that would be a good fit for Hatfield. And that's what we would submit, the application, the best practices that we'd like to achieve.
Financial management was another good one. I could almost write the report without anything, but...
Well, I checked out... Some of the items checked off. We currently have in place. Yes, review financial management structure. That I have an arrow there, thinking that maybe that's something we definitely should include.
Now, it says...
Long-range planning forecasting. I don't think that's something we...
The one thing, maybe it's covered here in what the Commonwealth's commitment is. Well, not here. What... Back up to what's our commitment? I say that because we could sit here and probably write the financial management report or a good cut at it. But town meeting's got to approve these things. So what does it say about our commitment?
We have to...
Just pursue it?
It's item one. It looks like it says, "We agree to implement..." We agree to implement...
You agree to implement and carry it out, to follow it. Right, so we can't just select it, and then it sits on a shelf. We need to actually do something with it.
But the thing is, we can't. We can't. The town meeting has to. So is the commitment that we develop the product that goes to town meeting? Or is the commitment the town's going to... I can't imagine they could require us to have the town agree to it in advance.
My understanding is that... I do see what you're saying, but I believe it's the commitment is... Depending on which practice you choose to accept.
Let's say the financial management.
It'll be a policy, a practice that you will follow. It should be voted or adopted by the Board of Selectmen.
Right, I think... I don't want to speak for you. I think what Jeff's saying, though, is we can... We could have you send something to them, but if town meeting doesn't approve it, or do we need town meeting's approval first to enter into this? Do we need town meeting approval for any of these things?
No, not... No.
Well, so that's...
Well, but, yes, well, I'm familiar with many of the best practices that they talk about in financial management. Some of them would involve restructuring.
We could add it if you want to add it, too.
Which would mean you'd have to go to town meeting on that restructuring.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
So it's not a matter of us being able to approve, to implement each one.
Right.
So I just... A little clarification.
We've got to do two things. We've got to enter into an agreement.
There's some things we can do. There's something we got to take forward.
Right.
Well, such as the town's financial policies. Those were implemented by the Board of Selectmen. That wasn't something that went to town meeting. But I understand what you're saying. If it has to do with the structure of the town that would require approval.
Okay, so you want us to think a little bit about it?
I was just gonna say, can we circle back at the next meeting?
But the financial management one kind of jumps out as timely. There's another opportunity, given what's recently happened, that might give us a wedge in terms of the competition. And then we need to chat with Phil about the studies required to support the DEP.
The school department is interested in information technology. I shared this with the school superintendent. Actually, he was aware of a... It was the technology, IT technology grant that they had received. And, you know, unfortunately, we weren't able to apply for that grant because we're not a Community Compact.
Yeah.
Remember, not yet, but...
Well, anybody can jump in and jump out.
Right.
And it's just... Okay, all right. So we're going to circle back next time is...
Yes, absolutely. When you say anyone can jump in or jump out, why would you jump out? I guess if you don't want to continue those practices? Is that what you're...
Well, you commit to following through on the study once you put your application in.
Yeah.
But when they're done, you're out of the... Till you go back in for another project.
Right, well, each agreement is for two years. So once you see something through, it probably ends, and then you can enter into another one.
Another one, yeah. All right, so we'll circle back on that and talk about applying for it. And... Old business, I just wanted to mention, I received an email today from town council regarding the Chestnut Mountain property that we're trying to acquire. That's something that's been...
We had to wait till after the first of the year for tax purposes.
That was actually the other piece of property. The Chestnut Mountain, it's a title issue. And the attorney for the person who is transferring the property to us, the attorney is no longer representing the owner, the property owner. Town council had reached... So the attorney notified our attorney, and he reached out to the property owner. Just received communication from the owner that she's considering getting another attorney. Hasn't done that yet to look at what her options are. So I notified Mark Jalot, just to, you know, let him know we're still waiting on the other end. There's nothing more we can do. So until that's resolved, we don't do anything. Other than setting meeting dates for March and April, like to do that for regular meetings. I don't have anything else.
What's March? Okay, what would otherwise be our regular meetings, the second, second and?
We have been meeting the first and thirds.
First and third, okay.
But.
First and.
Town's website advertises the second and fourth, but we have been meeting the first and third, so whatever works for.
Well, the second and fourth, I've been doing the negotiations on the school committee's side, so.
Stick with the first and third.
For now, anyway.
Is that when the school typically has their regular meetings?
No, we usually meet on Mondays, but this is just for the negotiations.
Okay.
So the first and 15th?
Yes, that works.
Right, okay, that's fine. Good.
And the 29th?
29th of April?
Or is that bring us?
First and 15th is March, oh.
I was thinking every other week, but then we'd be meeting at the beginning of April anyways, so.
Now, we're getting close to town meeting.
We are.
March, April, May, you want to wait till we have our March meetings and sort of figure out how April's gonna play out?
Sure.
In advance of town meeting, and where we stand with.
And your negotiations will probably be over by then?
Oh, that would be great, I'm not sure.
Maybe not.
Well, we only meet every two weeks, so it's.
Well, we carried a lot.
We hope to have them over by April, to be honest with you, but.
We carried a lot forward during the next regular meeting, but I really would like to get some thoughts ahead of our session with the finance committee, so, at least we're on the same page, and we'll work it out.
Well, I'll develop a document with, with bullets and what we need to.
Okay, the one other thing, the awardee selection for town meeting, we need to get.
I'm sorry, the what, the?
Awardee, the honoree.
For town meeting.
Dedication.
Oh, for the town report.
Town report.
Oh, I was gonna say, you have an awardee for town meeting, for town report, yes, if you have any thoughts, ideas?
Well, we do, we don't want to tell the person in advance.
Right, we try to, to keep it quiet as long as we can.
If you have some thoughts, how about giving them to Marlene and we'll.
Fine.
We've got two people, and Marlene and I have talked about two different individuals for different reasons. You all may have something else, but, not trying to keep anything secret from folks, but, just try to hold this till.
This was like trying to plan Chief Felden's surprise party without.
Surprise party around, knowing, that was good, well, anyway.
People kept asking us questions, like, we can't really say.
It worked out.
All right, you'll, you'll send me your comments regarding the hazard mitigation plan, or I can just actually take your notes.
All right.
I'll, I'll do that.
I'll go over one of you, it won't take five minutes, but.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that works for me.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.